Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's Meeting for April 19th, 2022 to order. Will you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with public comment and announcement. Mary, why don't you start?
Sure. I'm putting on my old hat and making an announcement for the pantry. We're doing a grab-and-go event. It's this Sunday, April 24th, between 10:00 and noon. It's at the rear of Montemoy High School on Oak Street. The bag has some shelf-stable food products for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, a bag of fresh apples, and a modest Star Market gift card. The event is open to anyone in need, no pre-registration. So if anyone is in need of food, head on down.
Thank you, Mary. Cindy?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just a few announcements. This Friday is the Toast of Harwich at the Wacoset, and we are almost sold out. So if you haven't purchased your tickets, please don't miss out on this. You can call my office or reserve online at the website. Also, I mentioned it briefly the last time, next Tuesday, April 26th, we're having the annual Town Meeting Warrant Article Buffet Dinner Review at the 400 East. This is a reservation-only, so no walk-ins. So you can also call my office and register, and registering online as well through the website. And then finally, I'm super excited, this is something I teased about last week that we were doing, but April 30th and May 1st is the Prelude to Art Week at 204 Sisson Road, the Harwich Cultural Center. The events include the Open Studios, our resilience art exhibit, and reception. And then on Sunday in the auditorium is the plug-and-play. So please come and join us. Super excited for all three things coming up.
Thank you, Cindy. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy Sowinski, Conservation Administration. I'm getting a lot of echo here.
Jamie's working on it.
Okay, so I'm here to tell you, well, this is better, about the activities that we've been doing at the Robins Pond Conservation Area. And actually, Jamie, if you can, if you can queue up the photo that I sent, if not, I can share my screen. Thank you. So this is a group of AmeriCorps Cape Cod members who last week were out at the Robins Pond Conservation Area in northwest Harwich. And you'll, people have probably noticed that we have put in some post and rail fence along some areas where people had been driving illegally into the area. We've kept the road open. We want to promote public access. We want more people to come and visit this beautiful conservation area, but we want people to do so in a responsible manner and not destroy things. So we did put up some post and rail fencing to block some of the areas where vehicles actually could physically get down to the pond, pond itself. And out of the ditches of the, near the old pump house down by the pond, we pulled out all the debris and hauled it up the hill to where you see now. So a lot of old tires, actually an old grill, parts of an old sofa, and all kinds of lovely junk. So the area is now very clean, and hopefully in the future, we can manage it a little bit better while allowing people to come and enjoy it. If you have any questions about Robins Pond, I'll happily answer them. Or, and I also have a couple of other things to announce to you.
Thank you, Amy. It looks great up there. I was up yesterday taking a look at it. Any comments from the board? Don, Mary? Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. A couple other things to put on the town's radar. We have the Tour to Trash Community Cleanup, which we do in concert with the Harwich Conservation Trust. The signup is online right now on the Harwich Conservation Trust website. It's a chance for you to come out for a couple hours the last Saturday of April and come help clean up your town. We have all the routes that you can sign up for on the website. There's a QR code here. Please, please sign up, come out, help us clean our town. And a couple other quick things, just wanted to let everybody know, our darling piping clovers are back on our Harwich beaches. They arrived earlier than ever this year, which means hopefully if we make them happy and they nest, then we can fledge them early, and there won't be much impact at all to Harwich beaches. And the beaches that we have them at are Red River Beach and from Bank Street Beach area towards Whichmere. So you notice that the symbolic fencing is up at the moment, and essentially we'll take it from there. And lastly, we are, you'll notice that the Conservation Department has been doing some management at the Bell's Net Conservation Lands near the walking bridge off North Road. We have installed some post and rail fencing to keep people off of the precarious embankment and to prevent it from further erosion. And over by the herring ladder off of Depot Street, we have removed a couple of hazard trees, and we have plans to move the parking area a little bit more landward, so you're not parking your car practically in the herring run and doing some planting behind that. This is with the assistance of DPW and AmeriCorps, so just wanted to thank them for that and answer any questions that anybody has about my updates.
Thank you, Amy. Great job by AmeriCorps too, and DPW. Larry, any questions?
Hopefully, high winds won't slow the piping clovers down.
Mary?
No, thank you, Amy.
Don?
Same for me. Thank you, Amy.
All set. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
I do, Michael, but go ahead first. Well, my announcement is after a couple years of inactivity, the, what was called the Accessibility, was ADA is reformat, renamed the Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee. A good name because it's what it's all about. It's not disabilities, it's about accessibility. We met for the first time last week with Megan Support and Help, and we have a lively committee that are anxious to get going. And we're working now, I say "we," that's real "we." Megan's working now on updating the website. It's already been updated, I understand, the list of members. It'll be updated soon to give an email address for people to contact the town if they see issues around that they think is important that we address. And we get that back to the committee, and their, and then their role, of course, is to look at that, talk to administration, eventually bring those issues to us as the Board of Selectmen. So very excited that that's going again. And thanks again, Megan. And of course, thanks to committee. We, actually, the one we lost was your dad, Michael, but he, well, he's going to be good. He was in our last meeting when we went, but he was traveling. But he was, we've promised to get him minutes. But it's a good committee, and we're anxious to get going.
Thank you, Larry. Emily?
Good evening. Emily Mitchell, Council on Aging Director. I am very excited to share that the Council on Aging will be providing transportation to this year's annual Town Meeting on our handicapped accessible van. It's something that we had historically done pre-COVID, but has been on pause for the last few years. So it's a very welcome, consistent with our theme of a return to normalcy. Just a quick overview of how it'll work. Pre-registration will be required. We're operating our vans at 50% capacity, so that means we can take seven passengers per trip. If there's more demand than that, we'll take multiple trips. So folks are welcome to call. We will have folks, pick up folks up at their home to arrive at the community center for 6:45, and then we'll offer two return trips. So folks can leave at 9:00 PM, sort of regardless of where we are in the warrant discussion for that night, or they can leave when business concludes for the night, whenever that may be. And we do have drivers lined up for both nights, so if Town Meeting goes for both Monday and Tuesday, we'll offer it both nights, and folks can sign up for one or both. Folks can sign up as early as tomorrow, which is April 20th, and we will accept registration up until Monday, May 2nd at noon. And again, it'll be seven passengers per trip, and we'll take as many trips as we need. We will follow whatever mask requirements are in place at that time. It's a little bit in flex after yesterday's court ruling, but if there are any state or federal mask requirements in place, we will follow those and will advise folks who sign up about what they are. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or folks can call us beginning tomorrow at the Council on Aging.
Great. Thank you. Questions, Don?
No, it's great to have the buses back for Town Meeting.
Yes.
No, just thank you, Emily.
Larry?
Yeah, the same.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Chief?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chief of Police. On your agenda tonight is our second appointment for a full-time police officer, and I think is about as many weeks. We are, I'd love to introduce you to Drew Ridenhour, who is our candidate for a full-time police officer. Drew was a Cape kid, grew up in Mashpee, went to Mashpee High School, so he has ties to Cape Cod. He went from there to the police program at Pittsburgh State College. If you call Colin Thomas, the two candidates ago, was a graduate of that too. I think you guys are classmates, right? Colin Thomas? Yeah. So he was a classmate with Colin in the Pittsburgh program, which is a four-year criminal justice degree plus a one-year hitch, well, not quite a year, but a hitch in the Police Academy, should comes out as a criminal justice grad with a BS in criminal justice and a full-time Police Academy certification, which is huge for us because we don't have to pay for an academy or wait for them to go in and then come out. And we are facing a real personnel shortage. So we are extremely fortunate to have Drew interested in Harwich PD at this time. He did a great job in the hiring process, and we're really looking forward to bringing him on board.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you. Mary, do you want to do the consent agenda so we can make it official, and then comments from the board? And the only addition to that piece of the consent agenda is to make it effective April 20th, tomorrow.
Do you want the whole consent agenda or just that item?
Do the whole consent.
I move that we vote to approve the consent agenda with the following items: to approve three Caleb Chase requests for the following amounts: one for $1,000, one for $590, and one for $439. Also, to vote to authorize the chair to sign a step increase requested by the fire chief. Also, to vote to approve the buyback of vacation time for the fire chief. And a vote to approve a full-time police officer appointment recommendation of Drew Ridenhour, effective April 20th, 2022.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Don?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Comments? Don?
Did anyone tell you you were supposed to bring refreshments for the entire meeting? Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, and we're really glad to have you. Where the chief has been down five. It's really a pleasure to have you join us.
Larry?
No, welcome to Harwich. We're very proud of our police department here, and so it's nice to have you aboard.
Welcome aboard. You're joining a great police department.
Oh, come on.
Okay, Mary, first public hearing.
Okay. Harwich Board of Selectmen Notice of Public Hearing: Treasure Chest Fees, Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM during their regularly scheduled meeting. This hearing will be held for the purpose of reviewing and implementing fees for the treasure chest located at 205 Queen Anne Road, Harwich. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend either in person or remotely. Dial-in information will be on the posted agenda. Board of Selectmen meeting will be held in the Griffin Room at Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, signed by the Harwich Board of Selectmen and in the Cape Cod Times, April 3rd, 2022.
The public hearing is open. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this? And what we're here for is to approve or not approve a $5 sticker fee for the treasure chest. It was presented by the treasure chest, and this board discussed it, and now we're going through the public hearing process to approve it. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing. Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Board comments, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know about the rest of you, going around town, supermarkets and such. I've been hearing a lot of people feeling that this is a reasonable thing to get the treasure chest open. They feel that the $5 is not an impediment at all.
Thank you. Mary?
Nothing. I think it's very reasonable.
Larry?
Yeah, I agree. I think some of it, when it came up last time, I know I voted against it, but I think the system has changed from $5, very reasonable. It'll cover part of the price of the, of the stickers.
Thank you, Larry. And Amy, if I'm correct, the stickers have been ordered, and we expect them any day?
Well, they were actually received last week, so they're ready to go.
They're ready to go. Great. Can I get a motion to approve the $5 fee?
I move that we vote to approve a $5 fee for entrance to the treasure chest.
For residents.
For residents.
For residents.
For residents.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the $5 fee. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Michael, can, some discussion after the, related to this, but not pertinent to the $5 fee, is just procedurally, because right now, we're hoping to open the treasure chest at 28th. I think that's a Saturday. And the stickers, I don't think, you know, they won't be able to buy, purchase stickers, because I'm not sure when we start selling seasonal stickers for the beaches and stuff.
Amy?
Yeah, we have started, we started selling beach stickers actually March 1st. In keeping with last year, we began really early this year again. And we can make the treasure chest stickers available tomorrow. My preference, as I stated in my memo to Carol that's in the packet, is to not sell them in person at Town Hall until after the community center sales close, which would mean that for now, they'd be available online or by mail only. If purchased on, you know, either way, they could come pick them up at the, at the treasurer's office. Or I'm wondering whether or not, if they're paid for and ordered, we could somehow bring them over to the treasure chest, and they could pick them up on their first visit. And Cindy has, I've spoken with Cindy at the chamber, and she's actually said she will be willing to sell them as early as May 9th this year.
Thank you. Larry?
Well, that helps, because it may be, we want to have a grace period for a couple weeks until we require the stickers. We'll have signs saying Harwich for residents only, but not, not press them, everyone buying stickers, is my point, if that's reasonable.
Don?
Mary?
Mary?
Is there any reason we can't sell them at the treasure chest?
Yeah, that's, I'd be reluctant to do that, because we're not set up to take
Take cash.
Yeah, to do, do all that. I'd rather do it within the existing procedure when we sell other stickers. But the point is, is that, you know, it's only two weeks, less than two weeks until we're open. And so, and our discussion might be easier to, you know, give a couple weeks, and before we start enforcing the sticker rule.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unless I'm mistaken, this may have a natural attenuation anyway. I understood that the first weekend that they were looking to bring things in.
Well, that's going to be my next announcement after this one.
But they weren't contemplating taking anything out, so I'm not sure we care about whether the stickers are there for that.
Yeah, that was going to be my next, because I wanted to make that public, is that the, what they would like to do, Don, is what you stated, is the first day is take, take in only, because that gives them a chance to organize the material they have at the treasure chest, and then the Sunday then, it would be open for both drop-offs and takeout, if that's the right term. And, and part of that discussion is, well, go ahead, that's my first point, because that makes it work in a more comfortable way, if they just drop off the first day. The second suggestion I would like to make, and I'll direct this to you, Megan, is that it would be possible to, to put one of the, of the lightest signs we have announcing that around, that's, you know, we're open, but drop off on the first day, and then give some notice around town as well.
Sure, we can arrange those big signs to say that.
That'd be great.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I recall, Larry volunteered for the first two weeks without the stickers to be the gatekeeper anyway, so.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Me too.
So we're all set?
I think so. Are people, they're okay with, just, okay with giving a couple, couple weeks grace on the stickers?
I'm okay with it.
Make it work. And the second one was, only makes sense from the committee's recommendation, drop off the first day. Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second public hearing, Mary?
Notice of public, public hearing, Town of Harwich Board of Selectmen, application for liquor license. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws, as amended, that application has been made to this board for a seasonal restaurant wines and malt liquor license for Saquon Tucket Snack Shack LLC, DBA Dockside. Arthur Donowski, manager, on the following described premises located at 715A Route 28, Harwich Port, Mass. 02646. A cafe with 50 outdoor seats. The building is 540 square feet. Walk-in cooler for storage is located downstairs. The deck area is 200 square feet. The Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing on the application on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, no earlier than 6:30 PM in the Griffin Room at the Harwich Town Hall, 732 Main Street, at which time all interested parties are cordially invited to attend, signed by the Board of Selectmen, Local Licensing Authority, and published in the Cape Cod Times, April 4th, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Arthur, do you want to join us at the table? Public hearing is open. Arthur, if you just, if you would just introduce yourself and the, and the restaurant to the public.
My name is Arthur Donowski. The restaurant is, hope I say it correctly, Saquon Tucket?
Yes.
Practiced. LLC, aka Dockside Cafe, Harwich Port.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wish to speak on this tonight? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded to close the public hearing. Roll call, Larry? Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Questions from the board, starting with Don?
Actually, I said, I wanted to say last time, we're glad that you're here. The only thing I'd wanted to remind you of and warn you of, because you walked into a situation that pre-existed with all of our liquor licenses, that you have a particular burden here, because you have an outdoor serving area. And it's going to be up to you to make sure that they don't wander off. If they leave the deck and start going off into the parking lot, they're, they're off premises. But I'm satisfied that you understand that.
We are aware, and we instituted this as part of our training, that all the staff will be aware, anyone running food back. We know where the boundaries are. We know we have to keep people there.
I'm good.
Thank you. Mary?
No, just excited. When do you plan to open?
Right now, we're looking at a target date of May 16th. There is some equipment issues, and we've had to get some replacements. So there's parts that we're currently waiting on.
May 16th sounds good. Best of luck.
Hoping.
Mary?
Nothing more. Good luck, was it?
Thank you. Oh, and we will have the ham and cheese. Have not forgotten.
Have not forgotten. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the application for a new seasonal on-premise wines and malt liquor license for Saquon Tucket Snack Shack LLC, DBA Dockside.
As requested.
As requested.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you very much. Look forward to coming down.
Although, Mary and I certainly have different goals. She's after ham and cheese. I want to know what the beer selection is.
New business, A, Mary?
Okay, I, I move that we vote to approve a 2022 seasonal lodging house renewal for Gingerbread House B&amp;B, 141 Division Street.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Michael, do you want to join us on this next topic? Next up is Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, with the Harwich Conservation Trust for the Coldbrook Eco Restoration Project. You can stand or sit, whatever you're more comfortable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board. Michael Locke, Director of the nonprofit Harwich Conservation Trust. Joining us remotely is Nick Nelson, where he was on, we'll see if he emerges again, with Interfluff, the consulting company that is assisting us with the design of the Coldbrook Ecological Restoration Project. First, a summary of the project and the Town and Harwich Conservation Trust partnership in this effort in Harwich Port. So the site is owned by Harwich Conservation Trust, acquired the retired Bog Complex, retired in circa early 2000. The land acquired by HCT in 2001. And over the past decade or so, there's been extensive data collection and planning in the effort to understand the site and the impacts to the water flow and the habitats. And the design process is in the final 25% phase. We know that the site has a flow-through stream, Coldbrook, that makes its way through the site under Hoyt Road, then through some nearby properties under Route 28 into Saquon Tucket Harbor. We know Saquon Tucket Harbor is an impaired coastal embayment because of excess nitrogen, hence the town's primary interest in this ecological restoration project. The town's nitrogen attenuation or nitrogen reduction feasibility study identified that the ecological restoration project envisioned by Harwich Conservation Trust could reduce nitrogen by virtue of the eco- restoration project being implemented enough to potentially save taxpayers up to $6 million in saved sewer-ing infrastructure costs. That was identified in the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan. In 2017, Town Meeting voters decided to authorize up to $2 million toward the eco- restoration project. So essentially, Harwich Conservation Trust and the Town of Harwich are partnering in this effort in Harwich Port, not only in the eco- restoration effort, but the co-benefit of naturally reducing nitrogen as it flows through the site on its way to Saquon Tucket Harbor, and thereby saving taxpayer dollars long-term. So we're in the 25% design phase, the final 25% design phase. We are at the beginning of the permitting phase, and hoping to move through the permitting phase by the end of this year, and then into the construction or implementation phase. Part of the process for describing the roles and responsibilities of both partners, Town and Harwich Conservation Trust, is to develop a memorandum of agreement, also called a memorandum of understanding. And that's what you have in your packet tonight. It's been reviewed by Town Council, as well as Harwich Conservation Trust, and you have that addition before you for your consideration. Also part of the memorandum of agreement are a number of attachments, two of which are license agreements. They govern access over the town's property, the cluster of four parcels known collectively as 203 Bank Street. Access over those properties by Harwich Conservation Trust in the implementation phase of the eco- restoration project. Another license agreement governs access by the town and its consultants for the Coldbrook property itself, for its nitrogen monitoring plan, because the town is interested in understanding the nitrogen reduction benefits over time, so that it could document the nitrogen attenuation benefits. I would suggest that because the Select Board has a pending interest with the disposition of the four parcels known collectively as 203 Bank Street, that your first priority might be considering the memorandum of agreement, and then as you determine how you're going to move forward with your requests or proposals relative to 203 Bank Street, and then decide on where you're going to go with that. on where you're going to go with that property, roughly two acres, then you could determine how the license agreements will work. I, I see them as more or less reciprocal agreements, although one of the license agreements, and I pointed this out in my email, as the email cover to this memorandum of agreement, that they're worded differently, and perhaps they could be streamlined. But again, that might be something for town council to take another look at.
Great, thank you, Michael. You answered one of my questions, which was exactly that. If we sell the property and the new owners don't want you on that property or access, we're obviously going to have to work on the licensing agreements and change the MO, memorandum of understanding. Certainly something for town council, not, not us, but I couldn't support this tonight because of that. 8D in the packet, which is on page three. The town will fund pre-construction monitoring following by three-year post-construction monitoring. That is, is paid for out of, out of article, the 2017 article, the 2 million?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So that's not any additional cost to your knowledge?
That's right.
The money's there.
That's right.
Last one I have, before I get to the rest of the board, is page four. Page four, C. If it doesn't work, the town shall, and it's outlined in, in red, implement a mitigation plan to conform conditions with HCT's ecological restoration goals for the property. Can you try and explain the, the town shall?
Right, so this, this paragraph in particular focuses on the open water features that were arrived at through the consensus design, decision-making process with input from the town's consultant, CDM Smith, and S Mast, as well as a town engineer. And we, we want to reduce the potential for any risk to water quality degradation in those open water features on the property, so this paragraph is designed to meet the mitigation for that risk.
I'm a little uncomfortable with the word "shall" with no funding source behind it, but I'll, but I'll also send that to town council and get their opinion on that. Larry?
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, that, you know, I was uncomfortable with this before, and I still remain uncomfortable because I think the $6 million that was referred to some years ago was based on the original plan, which had much, which had more open water and deeper ponds to, to have more mitigation than what was in the, your compromise plan now. And so I still, I think the equal restoration is a worthwhile project, but that's, it's taken much more precedent over the nitrogen mitigation that I hope would be at least equal with it. And I'm not so sure I care about the shall or will, but I am a little concerned about your description of what that means of, because the mitigation in your plan is ecological restoration. What happens if it's not, the restoration's not what you want, would you then decrease the open water and therefore decrease the nitrogen reduction goals? It, you know, we had two, two concerns, and we're hoping they work together, but I see the one taking much more priority in this document than the other, and fair enough, but I think it's a little bit, I'm a little concerned about trying to sell this as nitrogen reduction when that's the, the document itself reduces that to a lesser concern than, than the equal restoration, which I would like to be equal. One other comment, if I may. This document, even though the town's paying in $2 million, somewhere like that, the decision, the town has no input into the decision. The ultimate decision is HCT, according to this document. Is there any way that the town should have some input into that?
Mr. Chair? So a point of clarification, my understanding is that the estimate of potential $6 million in sewer-ing cost savings was generated by the town's consultant, CDM Smith.
It was, but early on, that's, that's my point.
Yes.
Before the, the change in, before the change in the.
There was no change at that time, because there was no design at that time. So you'd have to refer to the town's nitrogen reduction feasibility study that was funded by virtue, I believe, of two town meeting votes and installments of $50,000 each. So I would refer to that document, and I would talk to CDM Smith and S Mast, who I think authored that document, about the origins of their findings on their estimated sewer-ing costs, which are then further articulated in your CWMP. There was no design in place on which that nitrogen feasibility study was authored, so that's my recollection. So we might need to, we might need to drill down to get at a clear answer.
Well, but, but my response is still the same. We're picking an artificial number to try to sell this project, and I'd like to be sure that we're, that we're reaching the nitrogen reduction we hope to. And the design shifts over the years have decreased the potential for doing that, I think.
And, and throughout the design process, again, reaching the 75% design level, which was achieved June of last year, it was a consensus decision-making process with CDM Smith, with S Mast representatives, so they were involved all the way through. So that, that's where the design at the moment has, has landed.
Yeah, fair enough. I'm questioning it, is my point. You didn't answer my next one, though.
Could you, could you remind me of the second question?
My last question was, is that this document gives sole authority to decision-making to you and HCT without any input from the town. I understand it's HCT's property, but nevertheless, the town's contributed $2 million to this study. Should there not be some input from the town into that?
I see the town's input having taken place throughout the design process, all the way through to the 75% level and continuing through this final 25% design level. Again, you have S Mast representation and CDM Smith. Perhaps it would be helpful to have them present at another iteration of this discussion, because I, I see this as a first step. I don't expect any approval tonight. I think it's a, a comprehensive document, again, that tries to describe the roles and responsibilities, and I think these are excellent questions.
Well, certainly it's benefits for all to work together.
Yes.
I've just, I just want to be, well, I'm repeating myself now, so I won't.
I understand.
Thank you, Larry. Mary?
Yeah, I, I saw this as a first step. I would really like to hear Amy from Conservation and Dan, our water superintendent's, take on this. I, I was glad to see that the money is already funded, at least the 2 million, but there's something in there that talks about additional funding that sounded a little nebulous as to where that would come from. I'd also like administration's take on this, as, so those are the three parties I'd like to hear before going any further.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know it doesn't always seem this way, but I don't like to speak on things that I don't really understand that well, and I was going to say exactly what Mary and Larry had said, that there's not enough players in the room to be able to dissect this thing, including administration and staff, CDM Smith, so it's nice, I see the document, and broadly, I support the concept, but as we go along, it may become more self-apparent anyway, because that's when the RFP comes to fruition, and, and you'll know some of the answers that you posed tonight.
Megan, anything, Dad?
Nothing, Dad.
Can I ask that the board members send an email to myself or to staff with your questions and with what you would like to see, so that we can get as many things answered before we have another meeting to leave with those same questions? And then, Michael, I'll make sure that gets circulated to you. And I certainly appreciate the amount of time that's gone into getting to the 75%, and I know the town has been represented, I guess, to Larry's point. As long as we have a seat at the table, official or unofficial, I'm comfortable with, with that. The shall or will is for the lawyers to figure out, and, and, you know, if it doesn't work, what's the town on the hook for? There's got to be some cost associated with that shall for me to support that. But I'll get questions and, and if the board could outline what they want, that way we can have a more productive meeting on this next time. And I will get my questions immediately to the attorneys tomorrow.
Great. Thank you all for your time and attention on this. I think it's, it's an evolving project, and we look forward to it being implemented and, and working together toward that end. So, thank you.
And a side note, I can say it, but the procurement officer certainly can't. Hopefully, HCT has something to do with the purchase of that property, and, and then we won't have to fight about access.
Thank you.
You didn't hear that, Megan.
All things will be known in time.
Well, we have to advertise, and we're going to follow the process, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Michael. All right, Mary, I think we can get into motions on C, D, and E.
Okay, I move that we vote on the Board of Selectmen's 2022 summer schedule as presented.
Second. You're moving it forward as a positive motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I not say that?
Yeah, I, I second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion, and I'll start with Don.
I didn't realize you were actually, I thought you said that, move along to vote. But I'm in favor of it, so no comment.
Any discussion, Mary?
Just that same as I think you put in place last year, if we have a pressing need for another one, we should pop it into that time slot.
Absolutely. Larry?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. And then, just so the public's aware, starting on June 27th, we will go to 6:00 PM, and then it's going to be every other Monday, so we'll have meetings every two weeks instead of every week. Moved and seconded, no further discussion. Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve the fiscal year 2023 holiday schedule as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Megan, this mirrors last year, correct?
Correct, the, the only addition is Juneteenth.
Okay.
And that's a state.
State, yeah.
It is.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I move that we vote to approve the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee. John Bethel, Council on Aging, alternate member, term expires June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Whole business, discussion of possible vote to approve the 2022 seasonal on-premise all-alcohol liquor license renewal for Chase Escapes Cape Cod LLC DBA, the Summer House Cafe, 187 Route 28. We discussed this last week. We have already set up the three-month hearing for, it's early July, I don't have the date handy, but we've been instructed by council to renew the license and then go through the hearing process and see where they're at in three months, and then again, three months after that. They can't use the license until they're open, and there's been no grounds to take the license as of yet. Comments? Don?
Other than the fact that they didn't use it at all, I, I still feel that this is some sort of dark Russian novel take on granting a liquor license. Before you take it away, you've got to give it to, as a renewal, it just doesn't seem right.
Mary?
I'm totally with Don. I don't know why we don't just say no to it right now.
Larry?
Well, I'm on the other side. It seems to me that the procedurally, this is the way that we've been, our council has instructed the best way to proceed, and they still aren't going to open, so with that, Michael, I'll move that we, get this from me, we vote to.
A, whole business.
Trying to get the right one.
Yeah.
We, we vote to approve the 2022 seasonal on-premise all-alcohol liquor license renewal for Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC DBA, the Summer House Cafe at 187 Route 28.
Wrong address.
It's 187 and I.
There's an error, a scripter's error.
It's 126.
186, sorry.
126.
126. And that's our motion then.
I'll second it.
Okay. And the only comments I would have is, I, I do tend to agree with you and Don, but we have council for a reason, and A, B, C, C, this is the process that they generally follow. They, that, that language came out of A, B, C, C, and to me, it makes no sense to go against council.
And, and I agree with that. This is not whether we want them open or not, they're just following procedure.
And they can't open until we give them a permit. Other permits, border health, building, fire, so.
It's one you hold your nose and vote yes.
Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
I'm staying.
And I'm an aye.
I can vote for the first one.
301. And then, B, discussion and possible vote on potential appointment of members to local planning committee. We finished the interviews, you all have all of your notes from all of the interviews, and at least my suggestion for board's consideration would be to send your recommendations, your 11, to staff, and let staff go through those recommendations, and then whatever we all agree on or is majority will be picked, and then we'll debate whatever few there is no consensus on. That's my thought on the process, and I will open it up for discussion. Larry?
I'm fine with that, Michael. My, my only comment on is, is there, is there, is there a way that we want to consider increasing the size of the committee more than 11? We have a lot of strong candidates, and I know I, my first cut was to go from the bottom side, you know, who would I appoint? And I have maybe, maybe three, four? So I'm suggesting that we put together, maybe that's a start, but we might want to consider, you know, increasing that to a larger odd number.
Okay. Mary?
I know we talked about that, but I got thinking about it afterwards, and we, we agreed upfront that the right number, and I think John Ideman was the one that helped us with the number of 11, and I'm reluctant to change the number, because it's hard to pick 11. I almost think it's better if it's 11, so it's not just two people that were eliminated, it's eight people that were eliminated. Also, to, to the other thing Michael said, I like the idea of everything going up to the office, and if we all agree on the 11 people, we don't have to sit here and talk about people. I hate the fact that we have to talk about people publicly. I really don't like that. If we're in sync on 11, our work is done.
Don?
Mine is completely off the rails compared to the other two comments. I, I understand where you're coming from, and I'm perfectly happy doing that. I do want to at least make a comment that, what was it, like four or five people who were planning backgrounds? I kind of feel it's important, as we deliberate this, that you may want to consider who your two or three favorite planning-type people were, because it would be a shame to get a citizen board to create a comprehensive plan for the whole town that's crafted largely by people who had a planning background. That, that's the only thing I'm going to comment on.
No, that's a good comment. I, I, I mean, for me, I've picked my 11, so, and I gave a lot of thought to who they reach and, and what their knowledge was, and some planning, some not, so I guess the first, the first question is, are we okay with sending, sending our 11 in and then going from there?
Yeah.
And I would ask if that's what the consensus of the board is, is that we do that as soon as we can, so that our next meeting, we can start to, we, we need to get to an end on this sooner rather than later. This project has been looming for a while, and we need to get this going. So is the board okay with the, and, and Larry, to your, to your comment about picking more, there was a lot of qualified people. Seven on a committee sometimes is a nightmare. I, I'm not sure 11 isn't more than enough, and any more would be a recipe for disaster, because we're going to also have professionals and staff involved in this, a lot of staff.
Yeah. And normally, I'm in agreement with that. I like smaller committees rather than bigger. This one strikes me a bit differently, because we want a diverse opinion of, we'll make as broad as we can, to be sure we have open discussion. I think I can live with 11.
Why don't we start with 11?
And we'll see what happens, see what happens. And to Don's point, it's interesting, I, I go through a thought process and, and. And we'll see what happens, see what happens. And to Don's point, it's interesting, I go through a thought process and I look at maybe four planners that, you know, four planners is too many. I looked at other disciplines, too. If we had, I know I'm looking at two people that have identical input, far as I can tell. I'll recommend one, because I don't want two having identical, even though they're both qualified probably. But just to try to be sure we get as much range as we can. So, in the same general theme that, Don, you're talking about, but in other areas as well.
Go ahead, Don.
And that really is all I was saying. I'd like to see as much diversity, because, I mean, this is really the people's plan. I mean, we have all these other people that are going to support how it comes out, but it's not their plan. It's the town's plan. It's the folks we put on that should have representation for portions of the town.
So, we'll start with 11.
Yeah.
We'll have a further conversation after that. We will, who we all agree on unanimously is obvious. We'll go to majority after, after the obvious, and then we will debate whatever's left. That's good with the board?
It is.
Yes.
Can we do that? You know, when the packets are due, tomorrow, we're going to put the agenda together.
For tomorrow.
With the, with the, well, we don't have to have the packet together tomorrow. We really don't have to have that portion of the packet done until next Monday night. But staff needs as much time as they can to work on it. So, do you want to do it next week, or do you want to wait one more week?
I'm ready to do it next week. Won't take that long.
I'd rather wait.
I can do it. I've got eight yeses, and I'll just have to poke through my maybes. So, I could have that, Megan, tomorrow.
I just hate to kick the can down the road.
Yeah.
Julie, Julie.
We've been pushing it for, I know, I've been beating on people for three years to get this going.
How much time you need, Don?
Well, I'm just thinking, with a town meeting coming up, we're not, these people aren't going to sit at a meeting probably for another three weeks, even if we do bring it back next week.
No, I just want to get it done.
No, I agree. I was just hoping that we could wait one more week, so we could rank them.
So, we'll, we'll.
I have all the things going on.
We'll do it in two weeks.
Okay.
We'll add it to the agenda in two weeks. But the sooner, the sooner the staff gets it, the better, and the easier it will be for them.
Try to do that.
Town administrators' report or assistant town administrators' report?
I just wanted to make the public aware that the fiscal year 23 Human Services Grant Program is out. The RFP is on the website. It was sent around on our social media. It's available in print in the town administrator's office. This is, again, the Human Services Grant Program, and we'll be taking applications throughout the month of April and half of May.
And that information was in the packet tonight.
It's in the packet. It's on.
Public wants to look at it if they can. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I might want to recommend something, though, because I had to have this question recite law services, and without getting parochial about anything, did anybody who had a previous grant get informed that it was ready to be on the internet? Because you're talking about all 501(c)(3)'s. They don't have, like, voluminous staff. I think it'd be really important so that they don't just inadvertently miss it. Because this, this is an outlier. Everybody else does it either in the fall or in the early winter. This is the latest one, and then the cycle begins again in August. So, it'd kind of be important to allow all of the grantees from the prior year the opportunity to fill it out.
Sure, we can do that.
Mary, any discussion?
No. I think, from the pantry, I used to get notified. I don't know whether it was in the mail or email, but we always got something saying, you know, it's that time of year.
Larry?
Nothing.
Town administrators', Board of Selectmen's report?
Nothing.
Mary?
All set.
Don?
Found all my eggs.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.